All right, well, I had some notes compared. First up, yeah, I'm Brad Miller, stakeholder, concerned citizen. I've been watching the meetings. I've reached out to a few, a couple of you guys anyways, and I don't get a lot of responses anymore. But I think the first time I was here was over the BPS legacy thing last year. And I think this board has reached a point where we need to have a third party come in and evaluate the superintendent's report and review his conduct and how they interact with the board because of a few things. A couple of things stem from the meetings that I had with him and the exchanges I had with you guys. But just to briefly go on to, you know, a quick review. You know, I first came to you guys over the legacy report, over the addition of the legacy hockey program, and I exchanged emails with Mr. Segsvine. And, you know, felt at that time that I had pointed out pretty obviously to you guys that you weren't purveying, you know, honest information to the public and never received a response or it was kept being told that you were. And where that led to was a meeting with Mr. Hornbacher, Dr. Hornbacher, sorry, that, you know, we addressed some of the concerns. And, you know, what, what came out of that meeting was I was basically told that I, you know, we should be happy that BPS was going to be building a hockey rink and, you know, construction happened. And to me, that just pervaded the number one problem, or what I think is a problem with this board is that it seems more focused on expanding your budgets and expanding, you know, it's more of a property development aspect and, I mean, an employer. And it brought up concerns. I met with Dr. Hornbacher that day, and he told me that, you know, some of the things that came up in that meeting were things that you guys purveyed to the public, that you had addressed before the meeting. And what that ended up... One of the biggest concerns was the effect that was going to have on all the programs. And you guys said you addressed the ice time facilities or the facilities and the ice time issues that that pervaded or that presented. And what I was told at that meeting with Mr., with Dr. Hornbacher that day after you guys approved it was Mr. Limkey told them after that meeting, now it was time to build a hockey rink. And that-
Mr. President, uh, excuse me-
I won't let them, false statements come out like that. That's not fair.
With Dr. Hornbacher dispute, I'm just saying what Dr. Hornbacher said to me.
You mentioned my name, Mr. Miller.
He did mention your name that day.
And I don't think that's what was said.
That's what he told me that day. And I said, "That's fine." And he said that, you know, "I would be able to sell more steel to the school district," which I had been doing. And I told him, "That's not what I do anymore." And to me, it was just, the only reason I bring it up today is that is why I believe we need to get a third party in here and review where the school board's at and their relationship with the superintendent.
30 seconds.
What was that?
30 seconds.
Okay. So I get 12 minutes, right?
You get four.
Okay. The thing that that brought up to me is that there was no plan as opposed to purveyed to the public and that they did, eventually they did come up with a plan. And what Mr. Hornbacher brought to the table, I believe, in that fall was a plan to use ESER money.
Time. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Please state your name for the record. You can sign in on the signup sheet and let us know which agenda item you'll be addressing.
My name is Jan Wengler from Bismarck. I will also be addressing the same issue. And as per Robert's Rules of Order, I will concede my time to someone to speak on my behalf.
And Mr. Miller, you'll have another four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Anyways, what that became to me was that it was more important that we expand the budget and, you know, it came at any means necessary. I'm a hockey guy. I was kind of happy you guys were going to build an ice facility. What it meant to the public, I didn't think was right. And I think that is why we need, you know, again, I'm saying that is why it's time for that third party to come in. ESER money is obviously COVID money. And, you know, that was, it's, it's money that was intended for the entire school district. I think some of the things that have come up throughout the year has got people concerned with what comes with the ESER money. And I think if you read into you guys' paperwork, you know, we were, you were told that it was to combat the learning loss. That was occurred by policies that were put in place to combat COVID, policies put in place by you guys. And it was to benefit all the students. And now we're building buildings. We put an addition on to legacy. And I believe you guys got some money in there for the CTE building. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but that sounds like money is going to construction instead of going to combat the learning loss. And that, and out of that meeting spawned a lot of concerns that it made me watch and get more involved with you, you know, paying attention to what you guys are doing. I've been on TV a couple of times. I think you've been reached out to, to respond. And you haven't done that. But, and I think that's something the public needs to know. I think, you know, tomorrow is a pretty big day for some of you and, you know, for the public to, you know, have all the information. Seems like all of the reporting that's done around, done around here is done in-house. You guys review how you guys are doing. You guys say you're transparent. And I got loads and loads of emails where it was a fight with you guys to do it, to get information out of you. And it, like I said back in the beginning to Mr. Segsvine and Mr. Hornbacher, that it was, it was apparent to me that this was not just a hockey thing, and it was not a hockey thing for me anymore. It was that we're behaving responsibly, you know, as a board, and the board is doing its job. And it wasn't a political board. And it became real apparent, you know, over the last four years, the budgets have increased 22%. People's property taxes have increased, what, 21%? What the board has collected in property taxes is 21%? And I don't think people understand that you guys have control over that. And to watch you guys' meetings has been concerning because there's never discussion. And nothing's ever brought up in those, along those lines that push back. And I think one of the-
30 seconds.
One of the number one things that, you know, you guys are elected for is to be good stewards of the budget and have a fiduciary duty to the public. And with that, you know, 22% over time, people are disappointed. It would be one thing, and I've said this on TV, I've said this publicly many times, nobody would have a problem with what you guys are doing if, you know, the kids were seeing the benefit. And right now, it seems that-
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the agenda item you'll address.
Chair Lee, Commissioners, my name is B. Streifel. I'd like to speak to the issue of the superintendent and the other similar issues. And I would concede my time to Brad to speak on my behalf.
Mr. Miller, you're going to get your 12 minutes, one way or another.
There might have been-
Four more.
There might have been a plan. But I did cut down some of what I was going to say. So anyways, what, I guess I felt it was important that somebody speaks today because of the election tomorrow and people realize, you know, that if we want to keep going the same way, the district's not as rosy as we, as it seems to be put out here. One question that I'll pose to you, and I would like an answer. You know, Mr. Lee, I do, I do, I do appreciate your response that I did get from you. But the one thing I'm going to pose, and this speaks to that last enrollment, is that enrollment report, is that every time you watch one of you guys' meetings, we're expected to believe that BPS is growing at this enormous rate. And by, when you go into your own reports, it shows that it's not increasing. It's either flatlined or decreased. And that's going back from the enrollment report that you guys had, that you have on there today, and going back to a year ago, and comparing them and going back two years because you guys do the same thing over and over, which is good, so that the public can see if you know what you're looking for. And it does not show the increase that you guys are preventing to the public. And that is, I mean, it's a question I have. The one thing I hear a lot about is the kindergarten enrollment was so big, it looks like it's decreased by over 20%. The middle schools have flatlined. School capacity in the elementary school levels looks like it's to be about 80% with two more schools coming online, which would take us down to like 60% in the elementary school capacity. It, to me, that speaks of unnecessary construction. And for whatever reason, I'm not making any accusations, but it's feeding a budget. And I know that it's been use it or lose it. And at this time, you know, you guys are elected with the fiduciary duty as, that's probably the number one concern of tax, you know, of the taxpayers right now. Educating students obviously is a priority. And with, by that, I mean, I look at your guys' proficiency scores, and there's a downward trend there. The downward trend doesn't seem to, I mean, when, I've heard you guys respond to some with percentages and they're close or, you know, they're not falling as rapidly as other places. But it looks like they're falling, you know, with a percentage. You know, what is it, less than one? I don't know, over 5%? But our budgets have increased 22%. People want the bang for their buck, you know? And if we don't, are we leaving, are we just, is the legacy here to build buildings? That's, I think the people deserve answers, and I think we deserve, you know, they need to know the right information when they go into voting tomorrow or as we go ahead. One of the things that, that speaks into that, and I'll talk about the meeting I watched last week with-
30 seconds.
Real quick, I go to the Century parking lot two times a week. That thing was a mess all winter, all year long. I hear the, it was built on a dump over and over again. It needs to be redone. No doubt about it. But then why do we need a $2.5 million administration building when we've moved administrators how many times in the last decade? And that's what I was talking about, the budget responsibility. I think, you know, we need to be more responsible here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller, and thank you for abiding by the time limits. Anybody else like to speak tonight? Well, welcome. State your name for the record and the agenda item you wish to address.
Hi, my name is Kimmy Needham. I wish to address agenda item number three, and I'm going to concede my time to another speaker.
And that speaker is me. This should be the last one. Century Parking Lot. The only reason I bring up the Century Parking Lot is I thought it was another example of this board absconding their duties. And you guys come up here and he's got a million dollar extra expense. What are the American people, what are the people of Bismarck doing right now with inflation at 20%? Everyone's cutting budgets, everyone's watching pennies, and you guys are just throwing it out, $2.5 million without a vote. You know, I think you guys need to look at, I mean, that's, that's why the accountability aspect of it. I think enrollments are over-reported for budgetary concerns. It's time for a third party to come in and look at it. And I think people need to look at that tomorrow when they vote. Look who's endorsed who, look who's rerunning, and see if we want more of the same, where it's an increase, you know, I don't know, you know, the focus of this board and of this school district right now seems to be property development and an employer. You guys are real proud. I saw the BPS Foundation, that you guys have 2,230 employees right now. 1,100 of those are teachers. But when you talk to a teacher, they, everyone tells you their classroom sizes are too big, they're overwhelmed. So what does the number need to be at? If you guys didn't have that ESER money this year, what would be the percentage of salaries that go towards, the percentage of the budget that goes toward salaries? And what would be left over for the kids? What would be left over for extracurricular activities? What would be left over? That number is pretty high. You know, I know you guys are going to tell me that the budgets have increased this year. It is a one-off. It's, I've seen, I've heard you guys talk about three, what was it, three years ago, 172 million? We're at 222 million today. It's because we have ESER money. Well, do the Ameri, do the people of Bismarck know that ESER money comes with all the social, emotional learning requirements? Do they know that that's a fancy word for sneaking in CRT? And I'm not going to get into the CRT stuff because I know it's a divisive issue with you guys. But people know, need to know that we are taking ESER money to develop properties that we might not necessarily need. You guys tell us we need them. And whether that's true or not, it's hard to tell because the numbers you say that you show don't show the growth. But now we've got a overwhelming hook into the Federal Department of Education, which Bismarck never had before. That number increases every year. And with that moves the curriculum choices out to them. We know that. It, it has requirements that people here don't necessarily agree with. So I'm not going to dig too deep into the CRT SEL stuff, but the people of Bismarck need to know that that money that's going to build a hockey rink, which, the hockey rink, we can even go into, we, whether, you know, that's the sole purpose. We need it. You guys were overdue in building it.
30 seconds.
But the way it's done wasn't honest. So the, there's, the, the money, the ESER money should be used to benefit the whole student body. If you guys can't give it back, that hockey rink, you guys can relook at it. You know, that's, it's one of those things, it's, it's already behind schedule. It's another one of those things where Dr. Hornbacher wasn't honest with the people that, with the city of Bismarck, people in Bismarck. You know, he was up here, see you in a minute.
State your name for the record.
I'm Heather Brostrum. I'm here to speak on the issue of superintendent accountability, and I will concede my time to another speaker.
Okay. Mr. Miller, we don't have to keep doing this. If you just want to finish up your remarks, however long you want to do it.
Thank you, sir. I promise I won't be too much longer. The, the hockey rink is kind of the last thing that I wanted to talk about anyways. But that and the enrollment numbers. But that hockey rink, you know, it's one of those meetings that I watched over the past year and in my discussions with Dr. Hornbacher and Mr. Segsvine that, that I had, you know, it seemed like that was thrown at me to, you know, pacify. And when you dig into that project, it was, it was, it was frustrating to watch him talk about it. You guys sat up here and you told us that you guys were going to add that program when it wasn't going to be at the detriment of existing programs. That wasn't true. It's obvious now that those kids did not have consistent practice times. It was obvious that they had scattered practice times, and it was obvious that they had limited practice times compared to prior years and compared to other cities in this state. And I'm not up here to talk about hockey, you know, that, I'm not. I'm up here to talk about what was told to the public and how that was handled. And the other thing that, when Mr. Hornbacher got that, you know, the project going and you guys were voting, I should have came and talked. He got up here and said it was going to be one year of that. Well, I guess last year didn't count. And the projects are already starting late, which we know you guys always start projects late. So you probably got two more years, if it even goes. So, and the fundraising side of that, the project's short money. I mean, you can see, anybody that looks at that, they've already cut out relocating the mini links, the golf course there. Do the people of Bismarck know that one? Probably not. It's one of those things that I think should be conveyed, and it's going to make fundraising for that project even harder. We're tired. I know I'm tired of donating money. And I know there's lots of people that are tired of donating money to your guys' projects where you say you're going to do something, and then something else completely, it doesn't even come close to happening. What do you think Sheila Schaefer would think if she knew that you guys were just going to take out her mini links course without a plan to relocate it anymore? I don't, I don't, you know, that, and that, me, I donated personally to Schaumburg. Was told one thing, another thing, it didn't happen. It's happened over and over again with this guy. It's going to make it. My concern is the project doesn't happen, but I know there's enough ESER money around. But to me, it's an example of you guys doing one thing, saying one thing, and then doing another thing. The, and that's why I think we're past the point right now where the board, as it is, you know, whether it's you guys that are here or ones that win election tomorrow, hopefully you got, the people of Bismarck are tired of it. I think you're seeing it around at other committees and other commission meetings. They're tired of the, you know, paying more money and not getting the return on their investment that you guys are saying is coming out. And they're getting tired of being told one thing when another thing is actually happening. Hopefully, they get, they'll, you know, I, I think the way this has got to go is the board needs a redo, whether that, you know, the policies are in place to enforce it. I don't think we have the people over here right now to, to enforce it. But the people that are leaving have endorsed those that are running, and, you know, we got to be careful at who we vote. And if you're going to be around here again, know that we're going to be around to hold you accountable. We can't have 22% increases over four years over a whole nother term. It's not, that's insanity for a school district that is growing. I mean, by your guys' reports, the school district grows by 5% a year, 5% to 8%? You know, and the city of Bismarck grows at 0.40%? It's a small amount of people having a lot of kids, and it doesn't. And doesn't, the math doesn't work out. It, I hope you, it, it's something where the eyes are opening, and I hope that the school district is ready to make some changes. I think that's all I got this time.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else like to speak tonight? Please state your name for the record and the agenda item you wish to address.
So my name is Amanda Davis, and it's superintendent report, the last one. No, I'm not giving my time. For me personally, transparency is super important. And over the last two years, we have certainly seen transparency not come to fruition with everything, whether that be contact personal through emails, phone calls, or even just at the meetings itself. Transparency is super important, and we need to be honest on where we are. And to me, the board meetings are a lot of foo-foo, everything's perfect and great. There's a lot of problems. We are not adhering to our zero bullying policy. We are definitely not being there for our teachers and allowing them to speak out, and instead, the teachers that speak out get pushed out. Not cool. Transparency, super important. Do better.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. It's been a long time. You're going to need to state your name for the record.
Yeah, I've been up here for a while, but as many of you know, my name's Travis Jensen. First agenda I am going, I am going to speak on is public comment itself. And the reason I am up here is because I have talked to Dr. Hornbacher's office about this request on several occasions. I have emails if you guys care to look into it. I would ask that public comment be moved to after the adopt, adopt the agenda. Prior to public comment, you guys always say that is, it is to address business matters and agenda items, but yet you are conducting business prior to public comment. So if you want the public's input and you truly are sincere about that, I think public comment should be moved to after adopt the agenda. Okay, the other thing I want to speak on, I guess we'll run it under superintendent's report. I've been looking into block learning a little more recently, and I feel that the public was deceived. I feel the numbers and the testimony that were given from Dr. Hornbacher were, were a deception. I've been going back and looking at test scores, proficiency scores. As many of you know, the scores for 2022 have not been released from the DPI's office yet, so we don't know how those panned out. I have put a request in Dr. Hornbacher's office for those scores. But looking at the previous years, if the block learning program up at Legacy is working so well, can you guys please explain to me why our kids are scoring almost the lowest in the state? There is a downward trend at that school. Century, for years, has been consistent. BHS has been a little bit of fluctuation, but when you look at other major school districts, Legacy is falling behind. So if this pilot program that Dr. Hornbacher stood up here and says the latest and the greatest, I believe even so, there's people from all over the country coming and looking at it. Why do the test scores not reflect that? There's deception on this board. You guys deceive the public, and as Mr. Miller proved, unless you take the time to dig and dig and dig, you do not get the information. Why can you guys not be transparent with the people who pay you? We all have an investment. But the public comment thing, I have asked repeatedly, and I just keep getting told, "Well, we'll run it up to who needs to hear about it." That's how a lot of things go at Dr. Hornbacher's office. We'll just talk, talk to whoever, you know, we need to. Also, as many of you know, the watchdog program has, has went away after this last year. They went, they went under nationally, so that is no longer a mentoring program that we can utilize in our schools. So again, I reached out to Dr. Hornbacher. I have a couple of groups that are interested in possibly getting into the schools, doing some bullying mentoring, you know, doing some good, you know, letting community involvement. You guys all sit up here during your school visits. Mr. Eastgate, you're one that gets involved. Do you have to be on this board to be involved in the schools? Or can we let grandparents, can we let community members into our schools to be involved in these schools? What's the harm? So I've reached out and I've asked that we look at getting another mentoring program in place. I was told that the information would be given to me. I said, "There was no hurry." So then when I contacted Dr. Hornbacher again, I was told that it's up to each individual principal whether they allow these programs in their schools. So that begs the question, why do we have leadership in the superintendent position? Why do we have two assistant superintendents if all decisions are left up to principals? I must ask, what is his salary for? He gets paid very well, I think-
30 seconds.
-to the tune of $220,000 a year. Changes need to be made. And I, and I guess, like I said, I'm asking public comment be moved. I'm asking that a mentoring program be implemented. And then I'm, I'm asking the Legacy block learning be evaluated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Any other public comment? Please state your name for the record and the agenda item you wish to address.
Hi, my name is Tana Lee Tangen. My name probably rings a bell to a few people that I've spoken to, in particular Ben Johnson and John Lee. And I'm here to discuss the very same thing as everybody else wants to talk about, superintendent accountability. My story- My story quickly begins with a video that was dispersed in the school system. It was a child pornographic video that my son received. I was completely transparent, like that word, because I was completely transparent with the school and what I was looking for, for a resolution. I was completely transparent with John Lee, and I was completely transparent with Dr. Ben Johnson. And I asked for the students who were talked to about a child pornographic video in the school with the presence of two police officers, the principal and the vice principal, without my consent, without my knowledge, and without my presence, or my husband's. We weren't even told that there was anything going on. We wouldn't have known if our son wouldn't have come home and told us. So I went to the school. I asked for a letter to be sent out, and I wanted that letter to be sent to all of the parents whose children were talked to. I was told, no, it's not gonna happen. Not gonna happen. That's what I was told. I said, why not? Because we don't remember which kids were talked to. I said, wait a minute. I thought you told me that you contacted all the parents. You just missed us. That's what I was told. All to find out that there were other children whose parents had no idea that their child received the video, because their children didn't come home and tell them. You broke, not you. The line of communication was broken between children and their parents, when the school took it upon themselves to pull those kids in and talk to those kids about a video and interrogate them with the presence of two police officers and a principal and a vice principal. If those kids at any point in time would have answered any of those questions incorrectly, what would the outcome have been? What if they would have incriminated themselves? You think those kids knew what to say and not to say? But the point is, zero accountability. Ben Johnson will not even admit that there was a video. I asked him for a follow-up email. I could read you his email, but I don't have enough time. But if I read you that email, the only thing he would talk about is a list. This was another same associated thing to the same child who sent out the child pornographic video. There was also a list dispersed. Nobody knew what that list meant. Nobody had a clue what that list was about, is what I was told. So I was told that those kids were pulled in there to talk to about the list. I said, how did my son get pulled in this room? Well, his name was on the list, but yet you can't remember who you talked to, the 15 to 20 kids you talked to, to send a letter out to parents? They were on the list. I thought that's how you got their name. It's how my son's name got drug into it. And then I can't ask any questions about the individual who sent out the video because they have to protect him because he's a minor. But they didn't protect my minor son when they pulled him in there about something he was already deeply disturbed about. And then?
Thirty seconds.
There was, there was no follow-up as to what I was asking for. I asked for that letter to be sent out. I was told it's not gonna happen. So where's the superintendent accountability? That's what I ask.
Thank you, Ms. Tangen. Anybody else like to speak tonight? No?
Jeff Hamis, Superintendent Accountability, and I will concede my time. One more thing, since I was looking through my notes, I had one more question, and it goes towards enrollment and things that were allowed to happen. You know, a lot of, back when the boundaries were redrawn and we were told that we needed that Silver Ranch school, and some of the things that I found looking into that, I, like, I think the public deserves an answer to, you know, one, why were we building the school when we're moving kids to the north side when our capacity right now without those two schools is 80% of capacity? Seems like a boundary change could have been done in a, in a different manner. So I guess our capacity, you know, that we're looking for is down around 60. Another thing that came up, you know, it's, it's $18 million, and I realize that goes towards a long-term debt, but one of the disturbing things I saw that threw a red flag up for me is why were we paying $77,000 an acre for the land that those schools are sitting on if we're not using the school district as a property developer? It seems like those property developers are getting the benefit of you guys building a school up there and getting the benefit of a premium, a premium price per acre. And I think that's something that needs to be answered, and if it can't be answered, you know, then people deserve an answer. I mean, they, you know, they need to hold you accountable for it. It's a premium rate that those schools are being built on, and you go up in, especially in the Silver Ranch neighborhood, there, there, there's not a lot of people up there. So now what are we gonna be adding? We just added an 18, 16 to 18 million dollar debt in for an elementary school that we didn't need. Elk Ridge, there's obviously a neighborhood there, but we're obviously adding teachers, administrators, and support staff at that, at that school, as well as Silver Ranch, and I'm guessing since you're adding more classrooms at Legacy and a school that you guys are allowing transfers from the south side and other districts, hand, I mean, I, I can't tell you how many people have told me they're transferring up to Legacy into your cathedral up there. It, uh, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with Legacy. If we needed the school, we needed the school, but it doesn't seem like a lot of these policies, and this goes towards, uh, the school board handling, you know, working too closely with the superintendent, or it's intertwined, or you guys have the same narrative, is that that school's gotta grow. And it doesn't make sense when the tax dollars didn't need to be spent up there just yet. And why, it, it's, uh, one of the things I found out that was disturbing was the amount of people that wanna go up there, and I've been told it's the block scheduling. I've been told that it's now going to be gym classes for the hockey team during practice during the day. We're told that it's a, you know, opportunity to earn a degree while going to Legacy. Why is there three different policies for the schools?
Thirty seconds.
But most importantly, I wanted, you know, the most thing, most important thing that I would like an answer to, uh, is why we, you know, why we needed to spend $18 million, soon to be, what, $38 million with the Legacy addition, and pay a premium for the land at the same time? And then you guys still expect us to believe that you have the, you know, the stu, you know, the taxpayers in mind when you guys are operating? So, thank you.
Okay. Please state your name for the record and the agenda item.
Hi, Mindy Backson, in regards to the superintendent, and I'm gonna yield my time. So once again, I just wanted to also finish discussing what wasn't followed through on. In addition to me, you know, asking for this letter to be sent out that wasn't sent out, I then corresponded with Dr. Ben Johnson again because he sent me Policy FGCC, Student Interviews, Interrogations in Custody by School Resource Officers and Outside Authorities. So I had asked him, um, after he had sent that to me, he basically told me that he would be reiterating the Policy FGCC with the building administrators on the importance of the policy for future situations where students are interviewed, and he apologized. But I went on to tell him that I still wanted a letter stating that, after our lengthy conversation, that our conversation was indeed about a child pornographic video, and that I still wanted this letter sent out to parents, and that still has not happened. The other thing that I want you to know is on a school level, that I think it's disturbing that I was told child pornographic videos go out daily. This happens every day because they have phones. And I was told, especially this weekend, because it was just prom, and so I guarantee you there's lots of child pornographic videos after this weekend because of prom. This is extremely uncomfortable for me to talk about, and it should be extremely uncomfortable for everyone who has children to hear that, because this is something we need to take seriously. And the accountability part, that lies heavily on the superintendent's. I was told I had to follow the chain of commands. I've done that. I went first to, I went to the dean, then I went to the, well, I couldn't even talk to the, um, principal and vice principal because they wouldn't let me. I had to talk to the dean first. So I told them my story. I told the vice principal and the principal my story. I called John Lee. I was put in touch with Ben Johnson. I did that. Jason Hornbacher was my, was next on my list. But at this point, I'm growing tired of this. I shouldn't have gone through this many hoops to get someone to listen to me. And once again, I think it's something that if we're not gonna take it serious, who is? Who's gonna take this seriously? Because I'm not okay with that. I'm not okay with my child being exposed to that, and nor should anyone else who has children. So I would ask that, um, you know, Ben Johnson said that he was going to be talking to people about this. I don't know who he's talked to about it, but I don't know if any of you are aware of it, but it needs to be talked about, and something needs to be done. And if this policy, this policy that's in place that I read, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but from what I understand is I was supposed to be called. He admitted that, that yes, I was supposed to be called, but I wasn't. And they still proceeded to pull my child in, a minor child, into a room with four adults and corner him about a situation that he was extremely uncomfortable with. So I wanna know, where is the policy for this? This, this policy that Ben Johnson sent me doesn't really make sense that, what's really done from there? Okay, so?
Thirty seconds.
If I would have been there, maybe I could have at least protected my son, but I wasn't given that opportunity. And I would appreciate if, going forward, parents were given that opportunity, but there needs to be accountability. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Tangen. Anybody else for public comment? Hey, seeing none? Close public comment?
Presidently, I just think it's.
Ms. Preskey.
I think it's important, um, after we've had this lengthy, um, public comment period, and we have young Boy Scouts in the room and who are listening and taking this in for them to know about, um, our policy that we listen, we take in public comment and input, and then at our next meeting we respond. And so there's not a dialogue about these comments that are made here today, but that we listen and we reflect, and we come back with responses at our next meeting. And that's a big key to civility.
Thank you, Ms. Preskey. Well said. Uh, we will move on to item.